Good evening, welcome back to the Lompoc City Council meeting. Report come close session, City Attorney.
There is nothing to report.
We only got to item one, we never got to item two. Okay, and now our invocation from Joyce Baldwin. Joyce, if you'd all please rise.
Oh my God. We are weak, give us strength. We are poor, bestow upon us thine illimitable treasures. We are sick, grant us thy divine healing. We are powerless, give us of thy heavenly power. Oh Lord, make us useful in this world. Free us from the condition of self and desire. Oh Lord, make us firm in thy love and cause us to be loving toward the whole of mankind. Confirm us in service to the world of humanity so that we may become the servants of thy servants, that we may love all thy creatures and become compassionate to all thy people. Oh Lord, thou art the Almighty, thou art the merciful, thou art the forgiver, thou art the omnipotent.
at the Recognition Grove located at Beatty Park on Arbor Day, the 23rd honoring Robert J. Adams Sr., Bonnie and Jim Braithwaite, and Frank Hank Norcutt, AKA The Walnut Man. And each of them had a tree planted in their honor. Remember that that ceremony comes around once a year and we're always looking for local people who've done wonderful things to honor. And now we have some proclamations. There she is, you were hiding. Our very own library director. And how are you this evening? A proclamation for National Library Week 2013, whereas the Lompoc Public Library System provides free access and a unique community gathering place for all residents and visitors to our community and nearby communities of Vandenberg Village and Buelton. We service both those libraries through our operation and they pay for it. Whereas libraries are the heart of our communities, campuses and schools, and whereas librarians work to meet the changing needs of their communities or our community, including providing resources for everyone and bringing services outside the library walls. And whereas libraries and librarians bring together community members to enrich and shape the community and address local issues. And whereas librarians are trained tech savvy professionals providing technological training and access to downloadable content like eBooks. And whereas libraries offer programs to meet community needs, providing residents with resume writing classes, 24/7 homework help and financial planning services to teens applying for student loans, to older adults planning their retirement. And whereas libraries continuously grow and evolve in how they provide for the needs of every member of their communities. And whereas libraries and librarians and library workers and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week. Now therefore, I John H. Lynn, Mayor of the City of Lompoc, California, do hereby proclaim April 14th through the 20th, 2013 as National Library Week and encourage all our residents to visit the library, often to take advantage of the wonderful library resources available in Lompoc. And congratulations, both professionally and on your future family.
Thank you, Mary Lynn and councilmembers, everyone here tonight, good evening. Quickly, I wanted to, one thing you heard quite often throughout that proclamation was the word "community." And every year, the American Library Association, when they proclaim National Library Week, select a theme for the week. And this year's theme is Community Matters at Your Library. Something that is a recognized fact is that libraries are changing. We're no longer a repository for books. One thing that is really standout about what libraries have become is a community space, a haven for people to meet regardless of what they need. It's all about information access for everyone. So keeping in mind Community Matters at Your Library, this year we've put together a really special lineup of programming that's available at the library and I'd just like to take a minute to review some of that. And we're going to be having a food for fines drive at the library so people can bring in shelf-stable pantry items to the library. They'll all be donated to the Lompoc Food Pantry in return for having their fines waived. We'll be having a Wine in Lompoc presentation on April 15th, which is a Monday, at 7:00 PM. Councilmember Homdall will be there as part of the panel, so thank you for your participation. Along with Wes Hagan from the Cospepe Estate and Normanyos from the Flying Goat Cellars. We'll also be having all month long, on Tuesdays at 10:30 at our storytimes, we're going to be having different community leaders come speak to the children. So just today, Fire Chief Ladapow came and spoke to the children and showed off the fire engine to everyone. Later on, we'll be having a veterinarian, some people from the Vandenberg Air Force Base Base Program, and then also Lompoc Police Chief Larry Ralston will be there to speak to the kids as well. And we'll also be having an event on Saturday, April 20th, from 2 to 4 called Touch a Truck. And this program is geared towards kids. They can come to the library parking lot and see all sorts of different trucks available. So we'll have a fire engine, police car, tractors, different things like that, and the kids can actually get inside, touch them, learn about them, and all around, have a good time. We'll also have face painting and refreshments for everyone. So I'd really encourage anyone who hasn't been to the library in quite some time, or if you've been there recently, to stop by and see the services we offer. Like I said, we're changing every day and I hope that we are able to meet your needs. So thank you.
Ashley?
Yes.
The council would like to wish you a happy birthday today.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate that.
Don't be bashful. The camera won't see you over there. And the camera would, you know, people at home would rather see you than me, so. A proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. Whereas the Congress and the President of the United States have designated April 14th through April 20th, 2013 as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. And whereas emergencies that occur at any time require the prompt response of police or fire or medical services. And whereas the professional and dedicated public safety dispatchers of the Lompoc Police Department are the vital link between the citizens or victims and the public safety provider who may save their life or the life of a loved one, apprehend a criminal or save their possessions from theft, fire. And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information received from citizens who telephone the Lompoc Police Department Communication Center. And whereas the critical functions performed by these professional telecommunications, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, regularly go unrecognized behind the scene of an emergency or critical event. Now therefore, I John H. Lynn, Mayor of the City of Lompoc, California, do hereby call upon the citizens of Lompoc, as well as patriotic and civic education groups, to observe National Public Safety Telecommunications Week with appropriate ceremonies and observances to recognize and appreciate the vital role that the City of Lompoc Public Safety Dispatchers play in keeping our city safe. And do hereby proclaim April 14th through the 20th, 2013 as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Boy, that's a tough, that's a tough phrase, it is. But having been in the dispatch world and towing for a really long time, I truly appreciate all the hard work you do and I know how difficult it is to sometimes find out why people are truly at the corner of walk and don't walk.
We sincerely, sincerely appreciate the acknowledgement, thank you. Refer to Captain Demme.
We arm wrestled over who was going to speak and she won, so. I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and to the other members of the council for recognizing the city's public safety dispatchers for the work that they do. I know that they appreciate this recognition and I wanted to convey that to you personally, so thank you for that. You know, on the surface, the job of a dispatcher seems quite simple. You take incoming calls, you assign units to those radio calls, and you handle routine radio traffic. That seems pretty straightforward and simple, and many times it is, however oftentimes it is not. The incoming call to the dispatch center could be from a panicked mother whose infant has stopped breathing. Imagine listening to her hysterically attempting to remember the address where she's lived for years, but because of the terror and fear that she's experiencing finding her child unconscious, she's unable to remember her own address. Imagine the frustration the dispatcher feels, knowing that unless she's able to gather crucial information to help the mother and child, there's no telling how the circumstance could end. And once you do get that information and emergency services are sent, you wonder if the delay was too great. You wonder if there was something more you could have done. Take that one home with you. Assigning an officer to a call for service is also fairly straightforward as well. Unless, of course, that call is a call of a man with a gun and shots are being fired. You've just sent a friend into harm's way, not knowing how the call may ultimately be resolved. And that routine radio traffic isn't so routine when you hear an unfamiliar voice on the radio telling you that an officer's been hurt and that they need an ambulance. You sent that officer there. Take that one home with you. Yes, to the uninformed, the job seems simple, but it isn't. It's a demanding job that can be both physically and emotionally taxing, leaving a dispatcher with very little left at the end of that shift. Sure, you'll get decent pay and benefits, but you won't get rich. What you will get is you'll work additional shifts, you'll have your vacations canceled, you'll have your days off changed. But dispatchers do it anyway. They do it because it's an important job that needs to be done and they're the true consummate professionals that provide a vital service to this community that is often overlooked, just as they are often overlooked. That's why it's fitting that we recognize them for the work that they do. And again, on behalf of the city's public safety dispatchers, I'd like to thank the mayor and city council for recognizing the week of April 14th, 2013 as Public Safety Telecommunications Week. Thank you very much.
So remember when you call for service, be specific. Think about what you're going to say as you're making the call and make their job easier. Having sat on a tow dispatch desk for a lot of years, succinct information is very valuable and if time is very important, that's what's needed. The next two proclamations are going to be a little tough, so you guys bear with me. And there's no one here to receive them, and I'll explain why when I get to the end. So this is a proclamation for Childhood Cancer Awareness Week 2013. Whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids, for children and the Kids Cancer Connection, report cancer is the leading cause of death by disease among children in the United States. This tragic disease is detected in nearly 15,000 of our nation's young people each and every year. And whereas, founded 20 years ago by Stephen Freystein, a member of the philanthropic Max Factor family, the American Cancer Fund for Children Incorporated and sister organization Kids Cancer Connection, Inc., are dedicated to helping these children and their families. And whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection provides a variety of vital patient psychosocial services to children undergoing cancer treatment at Cottage Children's Hospital in Santa Barbara, as well as participating hospitals throughout the county, thereby enhancing the quality of life for these children and their families. And whereas through its uniquely sensitive and comforting Magic Caps for Kids program, the American Cancer Fund for Children and the Kids Cancer Connection distributes thousands of beautiful handmade caps and decorated baseball caps to children who want to protect their heads following the trauma of chemotherapy, surgery and/or radiation treatments. And whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and the Kids Cancer Connection also sponsors nationwide courageous kid recognition award ceremonies and hospital celebrations in honor of a child's determination and bravery to fight the battle against childhood cancer. Now therefore, I John H. Lynn, Mayor of the City of Lompoc, do hereby proclaim April 7th to 13th as Children's Cancer Awareness Week and call upon all citizens and community agencies, religious organizations and medical facilities and businesses to increase their awareness and participate in the efforts to help children with cancer. And the thing that kind of brought this to our attention is a two-year-old Lompoc resident and an outpatient at Cottage Hospital being treated in stage three for chemotherapy is the award winner of the Courageous Kids Award. And so, we are going to send him a certificate, and obviously there's a reason that Jennifer couldn't be with us today. It says, "Congratulations on receiving the Courageous Kids Award and on behalf of our city council and community, we honor and admire you for your bravery and endurance through your treatments at Cottage Hospital." City Administrator's Report, please.
Mr. Mayor, City Council Members and Community Audience, thank you for this opportunity to brief you on a couple of upcoming council meetings and business items. First, a special council meeting is scheduled for next Tuesday, April 9th, 7:00 PM, for council to review and discuss the 2030 general plan update zoning consistency. And second, I would advise there are two changes regarding future business items tentatively scheduled for the regular council meeting of April 16th. Update on the 2013-15 budget process and the setting of a public hearing for the water and wastewater rates. Both reports will be on the regular council agenda of May 7th rather than April 16th. And the staff report and city ordinance for council consideration on safe and sane fireworks sales inside city limits will be on the regular council meeting of April 16th. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir, a question for the City Administrator. The safe and sane fireworks, did we actually agree as a council to bring that back?
Yes, we did.
With the concurrence of three council members.
Okay, thank you.
Staff requests and announcements, anything else? Nope, okay. Oral communications, this is your golden opportunity to spend five minutes talking to us about any subject. And as you can see, we put out a lot of chairs, we thought there'd be more people tonight, but if anybody wants to talk to us, go in once, go in twice, come on down.
Mayor Lynn, councilmembers, Jose Huetron, I just wanted to just remind folks and invite members of the Lompoc community and yourselves to Startup Weekend. Startup Weekend Santa Maria is an event happening at Ellen Hancock College, but it's kind of an invitation for entrepreneurial-minded folks. It's going to be a really accelerated launchpad happening on April 26th through the 28th. We had a mixer and a meetup at the NBC Suites in Lompoc recently and we're glad for those that attended. And if individuals who are interested can communicate with myself or visit our website at santamaria/startupweekend.org. So it's a really exciting event that has happened in Santa Barbara and San Luis Obispo that we're bringing to Santa Maria and working with some stakeholders in the Lompoc area. So we're really excited about it and looking forward to having more individuals join us, so thank you.
I think you better explain what it is, because I know what it is and you know what it is and a couple of the people know what it is, but...
Absolutely.
Go a little deeper.
Startup Weekend is a weekend event, it's exactly what it is named as. You get, basically on Friday, you get ideas to, you get an opportunity to pitch an idea in only 60 seconds. And you're given 54 hours of the rest of the weekend to kind of...
Pitch an idea to...
Huh?
You're leaving out the details that people don't know. Pitch an idea to...
Pitch an idea for a new business, for an entrepreneurial pursuit. You've been, maybe you've been thinking about an idea that has been on the back burner and you need the web designer or a blogger or a marketer with some feedback to kind of help make that idea a reality. And so it happens over the weekend with final, four-minute to five-minute pitches being given in front of a judging panel. And so the best ideas are kind of voted on, but the whole thing is to encourage teamwork and entrepreneurship and kind of, I know myself, you know, I have ideas that I've been sitting on that I want to make a reality and sometimes I don't have the expertise that is needed to make it happen. So bringing together these individuals really helps make something tangible in only 54 hours. I participated in the one in Santa Barbara. My team got best market validation and myself and my co-founders, my co-founder are continuing building a neat new startup. It's web-based and that's just one example of the kind of ideas that come out of this 54-hour weekend event.
Councilmember Homdall.
You're having a program on over in Solvang this week. We had one here in Lompoc, but there wasn't too many show up. But you want to tell, if anybody wants to understand exactly what you're talking about, they can come to San Inez or Solvang and listen to the presentation before they come to that. You may want to tell them what that's all about.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. We're having a meetup or a mixer at the Hotel Cork on Highway 246 this Thursday at 5:00 PM. It's kind of a meet and greet and an informational session, kind of explaining what Startup Weekend is. So we invite the public and anyone interested in learning more about Startup Weekend. And it happens all over the world and we're just champions of bringing that to our area and encouraging entrepreneurship.
And it's fun.
It's a super awesome team building experience. It forces you to do things that you probably think you can't do or you don't know how to do. You do them and you're amazed at the outcome.
Find out how good we really are.
Exactly, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else for oral communications? Go in once, go in twice, gone. Okay, the consent calendar, we have item number one, approval of the minutes of February 12th. Item number two, approval of expenditures, payroll for $1,253. Voucher registered for $640,000, voucher registered for $397,000, voucher registered for $325,000. Item number three of Ward of Project FY11-S-1, the Olive Avenue Emergency Street Repair Project, long considered and delayed by government paperwork and now live here. Is there any item that a council member would like to pull? Seeing none, I'd accept a motion for the consent calendar.
Since I live near that mess on Olive, I'd like to approve, or move to approve the consent calendar.
And I believe, Mr. Starbuck, you probably want to second that.
I would love to second that Olive Street thing.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, could we vote, please? And that pass is 5-0, thank you. And now moving on, okay, the consent calendar, we have item number one, approval of the minutes of February 12th. Item number two, approval of expenditures, payroll for $1,253. Voucher registered for $640,000, voucher registered for $397,000, voucher registered for $325,000. Item number three of Ward of Project FY11-S-1, the Olive Avenue Emergency Street Repair Project, long considered and delayed by government paperwork and now live here. Is there any item that a council member would like to pull? Seeing none, I'd accept a motion for the consent calendar.
Since I live near that mess on Olive, I'd like to approve, or move to approve the consent calendar.
And I believe, Mr. Starbuck, you probably want to second that.
I would love to second that Olive Street thing.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, could we vote, please? And that pass is 5-0, thank you. And now moving on to item number four, a public hearing. The city council consideration of a planning commission recommendation for a text amendment to the city's zoning ordinance to amend Chapter 17 dot 112 parking regulations. The proposed text amendment will amend and update the parking requirements for development within the city. If adopted, the ordinance will be effective citywide. A negative declaration has been prepared for this project in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act. And Lucille is here to give us all the hot parking details.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers, members of the community. As the mayor indicated, the planning commission worked diligently over six hearings on the ordinance revisions to our parking requirements. The staff made comparisons to other jurisdictions. We had hearings and outreach with the Economic Development Committee. We put information out on the web, reached out to the business community through the Friday Focus at the chamber. So we did get some public input on this important item. There were some specific changes that the planning commission has recommended and they're all listed in your staff report, but I would just like to highlight a couple of them. One of them is tandem parking, which previously was prohibited by the ordinance, but the planning commission in discussions felt that in order for some of our legal non-conforming smaller lots to develop, the tandem parking would really be a benefit. And so there's specific requirements that are added into our ordinance to allow that. We did look at industrial manufacturing, because there have been some instances where some of business developers have indicated that our standard was a little high. So we have looked at that and adjusted the standard. Additionally, winery parking, we changed the requirements that we had in the ordinance and that was with discussion with some of the winery owners. And I believe that the ultimate language was acceptable and satisfactory to everyone involved. The planning commission also looked at parking in the front yard setback. This has been something that has been an issue in the community and it's been an issue for our code enforcement efforts. Our senior code enforcement officer has been working on this diligently. And we did look at it at the planning commission and the commission was willing to suggest to the council that the requirement that would allow people to park for 72 hours on private property be removed, that statement be removed, so that parking would be allowed only on a paved circus, surface, excuse me, in the, in the front yard. So the planning commission resolution has specific language noting as part of the adoption of the resolution that the planning commission believes that the issue is both technical and political and recommends that the council carefully consider the request. So I did want... So I did want to bring that up to you for your discussion and consideration. The other items that were changed were highlighted in the staff report. We did provide to you a strikeout version of the ordinance so you could see exactly the specific changes that were made. And that completes my staff report and I'm available for any questions.
Is car washing parking?
No.
Okay.
I think with the mayor, car washing on the front lawn?
That would not be considered parking. You'd be there on your car, washing it and then moving it off.
No, you can, in a residential area, you can wash your car on your property with anything. In a commercial area, you can't. Two different sets of rules. Stormwater. Yeah. You can get a nice fine for washing your personal car at your business, but you can't get fined for washing your business car at your residence.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, doesn't need to make sense, it's just a state rule. Our councilmember Leo.
Mr. Mayor, are we going to be going through this piece by piece or if we have questions, should we ask Lucille now, specific questions?
I think if you have a couple of them, let's, well, let's do this. Is there anyone out there that wants to talk to us about this? Anybody here for, let's just do oral communications and we'll knock that off and then when we get all done, if anybody wants to talk, we'll have one more lick at it. Anybody wants to, we'll open oral communications, anybody want to talk to us right now? Nope, okay. We're coming back and then when we get all done with our chat, we'll give you one more bite at the apple. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so a couple of questions I have. When we're talking about the parking for...
What page are you on?
Oh, I'm sorry. Page 2 of 11.
2 of 11.
2 of 11, under B, land use. And the banks, savings and loan, stock brokerage offices, one space for every 250 feet of gross. Does this take into account or consideration that the bank also has a drive-through and probably as many parking spaces wouldn't be needed because of the drive-throughs?
The drive-through was not discussed during the, the general discussions. There were considerations when this was established of employees and people that access generally.
Okay. I don't know if it'd make a difference, but when I go to the bank, it seems like the majority of people are going through drive-throughs and not actually inside. So the number, I believe possibly the number of parking spaces may be in excess in there, but maybe we can discuss, discuss that a little bit. Then, two lines below that, the drive-in or drive-through...
Hey Bob.
Yeah?
Let's, let's take that on for just a second.
Okay, sure.
Lucille, I think maybe what, what he's thinking of, and it comes to mind too, is for instance, at Union Bank, they have the parking around the bank and then they have that secondary lot in the back. And I know that Santa Barbara Bank and Trust has the front lot, but they had the larger back lot because of the number of employees that used to be in that building. But for instance, with Union Bank, was it built under a different set of rules than we have today and that's why it has so much of that, so much unused parking?
It is possible that it predated our ordinance, however, some of the actual, you'll find when you're dealing with larger organizations, they sometimes have their own parking standards and they want larger parking lots, which may have been the case when these buildings, which are a little older, were constructed. People were at that time, you know, they may have had more employees than they...
Do they?
Banks generally come and go with numbers. They have mortgage companies inside of them and you just never know what their requirements are.
Ashley, you're, yeah, I think Ashley, you're next.
I'm sorry?
You're next. Are you, are you on Bob's subject?
No.
On banks? Okay, let's finish with banks and we'll finish with Bob and then, did you have a bank issue?
Yeah, I think what she answered the question to, a lot of those banks have been here a long time. And they build it and there's been a lot of change in the banking community. You've got ATMs and you've got the drive-throughs and it may not be using and the number of employees have changed. So I think most of that information had been brought to the city prior by the banks themselves, knowing what they needed for parking. And so I, I don't know if we need to change it, but that's, usually the bank comes back in that process we need to look at. So I, I don't see too many more banks being built in Lompoc anyway to worry about that.
All right, there's one for sale now. Okay, Bob, next, next subject.
Okay. Then, two lines below that, the drive-in, drive-through restaurants. Here again, if it's a drive-in or drive-through, why would they require 10 spaces plus one space every 200 square feet? It seems like they require fewer spaces than the banks since everything's going to be a drive-in or drive-through.
Generally, if, a drive-through restaurant, again, most of them are fast food franchises and they have specific formulas for how they want to develop their site. They want to make sure that they, excuse me, have adequate parking for any walk-in customers and they have their area for employees as well, which is, you know, based on their numbers and their formulas, so...
Okay, so now I understand, it's also as a walk-in. I was thinking like the little coffee places where it's strictly drive-through, they wouldn't be required to have the 10 parking spaces, the little drive-through coffee shops?
They would be, it would be reviewed if we had new construction at the planning commission level, we would work with the applicant to do something. The thing that you also have to look at in some of these uses, you may create a drive-through that changes its use, that they start as one purpose and then change. So you want to make sure that there is adequate parking on the site.
Okay. I have a question on that subject. When McDonald's came in for their rework, seems to me they had an issue that they didn't have enough parking to put an outdoor walk-in freezer in that they wanted to do. Remember that?
They had some adjustment that they had to make, excuse me, so that they could have that dual drive-through in the back. And we were able to work with them, they had, they added adequate number at the end.
Okay. Bob?
Okay, just one last one. Let's see, page 4 of 11. Again, land use E. Naturally, you know which one I'm going to pick on is the hospitals. One space for each bed plus one space per 500 square feet of space plus one space for each employee. Now granted, Lompoc Hospital, the new one, for some reason was, well, there's not enough parking spaces there. But I'm looking at this, and let's say a new hospital's built, I think, had you considered that hospitals are 24 hours a day, three shifts? So why would you have one space, take for instance, Lompoc Valley Medical Center, of 350 employees? You'd need 350 parking spaces for the employees and only about one-third of them are there at any one time.
The, the planning commission had quite a bit of discussion regarding hospital parking and the concern with the old hospital site and with the new hospital site, both of which had a very large impact on the neighboring communities. And their, their hope, because they did not foresee a future hospital coming in, but they did feel that the previous requirement was totally inadequate and they did want to have more parking required.
And I agree with you, the old requirement was inadequate, I mean, both the old hospital and the new hospital is inadequate. But I, I really believe this is overkill. Real, I mean, why? With one-third of the staff there at one, at each time, so you're going to have 100, that take Lompoc Valley Medical Center, 100 employees during an eight-hour shift and you're going to have 350 spaces available for those 100 employees during any one shift. It doesn't make sense to me.
Bob, how many square feet is the new hospital?
What?
How many square feet is the new hospital roughly?
Uh...
80,000?
75, 76,000. You know, I, I'm not arguing the, for every 250 square feet or, or one space for every exam room. I'm not arguing that, that makes sense. But I am, but I do, I am arguing and I'm disagreeing with there's one space per employee when it's, only one-third of the shift is there at any one time.
And there's still a parking problem?
No.
No, no, it wasn't built to this standard.
That's the old issue. That's the, that was under the old requirements. If, if, if the hospital were built today, I'm sure there'd be a different requirement for it.
How many, how many beds does it have?
It's licensed for 60. Its average occupancy is about 35.
No, I think it's, it's how many that are physically there. So you'd have 160 spaces based on floor space, 60 spaces based on beds, and then you would have one space per employee. You've got 350 employees?
Right.
How many parking spaces do you have now?
I really don't know. It certainly isn't...
Do you have any idea, Lucille? Just roughly, in even 50s.
I really don't remember how many are there at this time. You could address it with the largest shift. If you added the employees on the largest shift, that would address your concern?
Or maybe just change it to one, one half parking space. Point five spaces per employee like it is on medical offices would probably, is, it seems to me looking at this, that the big hit here is for employees and you'd, if you, and you're going to have some people overlapping, coming in and going out, so you're going to have two cars there for a few minutes.
Medical offices I'm okay with because that's usually just a day shift. They don't have medical offices open 11 to 7 or 7 till, or midnight to 7:00 AM. And Lucille, you've got a good point there. It's naturally the day shift, there's more employees than the night shift. So if you, of the 350, probably 200 work the day shift, 100 work the PM shift and 50 work the night shift. So maybe you could structure it some way that way and if it'd be point five parking spaces per employee or something like that, but, I mean, so, Mr. Mayor, your calculations are, how many parking spaces?
It'd be point six for 200.
Okay. How many parking spaces would the new hospital be required to have right now?
570.
Yeah.
That'd be kind of overkill.
Yeah.
How, I think point six probably is the number. If you, if you, if 200 is the day shift number, point six is, 200 and 6 tenths of 350. So it's a little higher than the, the medical offices. Anybody want to weigh in on this?
The only comment I have is that it's very full during the day. As you go by this, as I drive by there a lot...
Councilmember Humboldt, but you're right, the parking structure as it is for the hospital, existing hospital was under a different schematic, it was not under this.
Right.
So I agree, it's, it's too small. But this, you'd have a, you'd have a Walmart parking lot sitting there for that hospital. The existing parking lot was undersized for this hospital. Why, I have no idea.
Because they asked for it.
I don't know. I...
Yes.
I, I warned them when they were building it, I says it's not adequate. They didn't seem to care. So, but this is, this would be an overkill. Not that we're, and we're not going to build another hospital here for another 50 years, so I don't know if it really makes a difference, but I think, I'd just like to see it become, in our records, become more reasonable. And I just think one per employee when it's a three-hour shift is unreasonable. So I, I would like to see that go to point six parking spaces per employee.
Councilmember Costa?
I would agree with that, actually, yeah, point five or point six per employee instead of the full space per employee.
Everybody good?
Just because there, it's, we need to make it greater than one-third, even though it is seven-thirds because of that overlap.
Yes.
And then, you know, outside things and things that happen, so...
Okay, so we're agreed to point six. So whenever the final motion is made, that change will be inclusive in the final motion for approval. Bob, you got any more? You got more highlights?
I've combined a whole bunch of them, so...
Okay. Who would like next?
I'd love additional questions.
Absolutely, so do I, but you're next.
Ms. Fries, do you have a question? Or actually, I just wanted to make sure it's clear for the public purpose. On page 7 of 11, that's what you had mentioned would be somewhat contentious potentially and that's the parking in front yard setback now being prohibited. The one thing I'm curious about is, it reads, "No person shall park or allow to be parked or left unattended any vehicle as defined by the California Vehicle Code in the front yard setback of a residential property except on a driveway or upon a paved area." If the driveway is unpaved, if it's, you know, there are certain sort of small dirt driveways or gravel driveways, that doesn't apply because it's still considered the driveway right-of-way.
If in the, some of the older homes on the south side, that is their driveway. And so we do not consider that. We consider that the driveway and they're allowed to be parked there.
So if you could quickly, I think I understand, but can you quickly explain to me and make it clear for the public so that way everybody knows what the front yard setback is considered?
The front back, front yard setback in the residential zone is generally the first 15 feet of the property. And our setbacks, there's a right-of-way anywhere from 10 to 18 feet in our residential areas, which we have to look at individually for a home. And the, the property line then starts at the end of the city right-of-way and the setback area is at first 15 feet of the property.
So technically, if somebody had a large front yard and they paved a portion of the yard, they would be able to park a vehicle on a paved portion of?
If the area, yes, they could park an area there.
That was paved. Okay. And then the other question that, I just want to make that clear for everybody because I think that that's going to be a large impact.
But they couldn't pave the area in the first 15 feet from the face of the curb?
Right.
If that was the city setback, you wouldn't be able to pave that unless you came in and got an encroachment permit?
You can pave it, but you cannot allow it to be there. If, if the area is paved, then it is allowed for you to park on it. It is not allowed if you're parking on the landscaping.
But if you do, if you are going to pave that area, and this is for everybody at home, if you are going to pave that area that's within the city right-of-way, you need to come in and get an encroachment permit because you can't pave it without that.
The, the city, yes, you should always check with planning and engineering to make sure that you're actually doing work on your own private property and not on the city property.
We, early on as mayor, we had an issue where someone had paved it and we took it out because of some other reasons and it turned into way too much fun.
The other question that I had was in regards to winery uses. If we could quickly go over that, I, I'm not sure if I'm looking at it correctly, but my hope was actually that it would be less stringent, but it doesn't look like that's the case.
Page number?
Um, let me see here.
Page 5 of 11.
Yes, page 5 of 11. Page 5 of 11, H. Winery uses. So it looks like before, there was one space per 1,000 square feet or even one space per 1,500 square feet plus one space for each full-time employee. And now we're still maintaining one space for 1,000 square feet, but for, only for the first 5,000 square feet and then one space per 3,000 square feet thereafter. So actually this made it more strict and not less for larger facilities?
No, we did an analysis in the staff report of January 9th, 2013, where we looked at existing wineries that came forward. We utilized Pallylaurin and Sea Smoke and did the analysis on our previous regulation and then on this new regulation and worked with the Ventners and the Economic Development Community, or Committee, in order to come up with a regulation that would require less parking. And that is... And that is how this actually works. Instead of having, um, before we had a menu, and someone would have to do, uh, make a choice on how they were going to operate their winery. If they were going to do tasting, then that increased the requirement more. If they had a large storage area, they still had, like, at a five-hundred square foot or maybe a thousand, but the comments that were given to the planning commission were, "You have very few employees that you need for a winery. You can have one person on a forklift moving quite a bit of product, and so you don't need a great number of employees." And that was the direction that the planning commission was hoping to move in, and everyone seems satisfied with this ratio.
I guess what I'm not understanding is how this is different. So if Sea Smoke were to build today in the same facility, in the same location, how would the requirement be different?
Um, let me just-
I believe one of them was originally forty-seven, with the new changes dropped it down to thirty-five, what I read in your documents.
Yeah, yeah, on page four of the January ninth staff report is where the Sea Smoke discussion is, and, um, they have like twenty-thousand square feet in their building. So, under the two thousand and six requirement, they would have been required to have sixty-one spaces. Um, under the proposed requirement, based on winery use, they're required to have nineteen spaces. So the calculations are, are provided in the table, and it shows you the different requirements and how the calculations were done. Because each one is very different with the uses that they have.
And the difference, the main difference, it looks like, is that-
Oh, it is that three-thousand square feet thereafter.
Yeah, that's what makes the big difference.
Got it.
So you've got some spaces at the front end, but then as the amount of square footage goes up, the number of people doesn't necessarily go up, so that's why it drives a much smaller number thereafter.
I see, I see, I see. Okay, thank you. And there was, you said there was analysis for the Paly Loring building, and then what was the difference on that one?
Uh, Paly is on page four, and with the two thousand and six requirement, it was sixty-nine spaces required. With the proposed requirement, it's twenty-five spaces. It would have been twenty-five spaces.
Okay, and then my only concern is that this may apply to other industries, particularly if there was somebody with, that's not a, a winery, but a microbrewery or something similar, where the parking spaces wouldn't be needed, and I want to make sure that we're capturing that now. Is there any way to do that? I know that there's, some of the other ordinance pieces said that it would be up to the discretion of the Economic Development Director, um, and I just didn't know if council had any thoughts on, you know, making sure that we don't just make it winery-specific, but for anybody who really meets that standard.
Would, would you consider a brew, a brewing facility the same as a winery, basically?
They would be in the same category. And we also did adjustments to the warehousing and manufacturing, um, numbers that were utilized, where we were requiring a hard, a higher parking ratio. And, uh, those were changed to allow for, where you've got a larger warehouse use, we've reduced the parking requirements as well.
So I would say winery or, you know, other similar categorical uses, or something that broadens that just a little bit, is there, can we do that at all?
If you like, it isn't, it was specifically called out as wineries, and we have interpretive ability to categorize, instead of listing each particular use, where there is a similar use, something that is, uh, very similar, when they would go forward, that would be the suggestion, and that would be heard at the planning commission level, and they would be granted that lesser parking requirement.
They would have to make an official request, though, and paid to have a hearing at the planning commission, is what I'm saying, and I want to avoid that.
Well, if there were a new, uh, a new development, they would, as would a new winery.
I think, I think what Councilmember Costa may be talking about is you have an existing facility that was used for a winery, and now it's going to be used for beer brewing, and if they were viewed as the same, there wouldn't be anything other than them moving in and, and beginning business.
And that's true. They would be viewed as the same production facility.
Even if it wasn't, even if it wasn't a similar industry, even if it was a completely different industry with very similar uses of production? I, I-
Well, it would be spirits, it would be, um, and that's what we do have the ability to utilize, uh, that category, put something in a similar category.
I guess the point I'm making is, even though we've eased up even on some of the other regulations, I still think that there are industries, such as the wine industry, where you have, you can have large-scale production and a low amount of employees. So I just want to make sure that, um, wineries, not, that wineries essentially aren't doing special treatment. We, we know them well because they, we know that that's how they work. I know that personally, that the amount of parking at Loring is so unneeded. Um, but I would hate to see somebody else be subjected to the other set of requirements that are more stringent, when in fact, the manner of business is done in the same way as this. Does that make sense?
Yeah, well, you know, knowing what I know, even from before, when we had a, kind of a grumpy process, now that we don't have that, that was something that's, I think, kind of a universal planning principle, is you look at what somebody's applying for, and then you look at your code, and you see which most closely approaches that.
I just want to make sure, just because it's called winery, it's not limited to just wineries.
Yeah, it, well, it's not, because you would look at, let's say somebody came in and they were gonna, um, what else? They were gonna make sparkling cider, for instance, then you would go to this. They were gonna make beer, and you were gonna, you'd go to this. So any similar process, I think would be the word.
It's a category of uses, so it would be very similar, and we would utilize-
So if somebody could prove that even though, I'm, I'm talking about they're making widgets. It doesn't even need to be a liquid base.
No, if they're making widgets, then they would go over and they would be on the, the industrial requirement over here.
That's where I was going to come in. This requirement on parking, I mean, I don't want to jump in, but I guess my question is, what we've created here, typically the winery's going to come in, they're going to build to their boundaries, they're going to get the most that they can out of this, and they're going to have the very sparse parking. So say now it's become a specialized building, usable only for production of wine, brewery, whatever you would determine, so it would take it out of the light manufacturing, even though it would be zoned for that because of the differences in the parking. So is there a way that we could do something that would stop it from ever be, being a specialized building? Or do we go and build city parking lots around there so that they can meet the requirement later? I mean, you, you see where I'm talking about. We'd create nothing but very specialized buildings when we invoke that parking requirement on a large square footage.
And that was a very big concern. What our previous, uh, ordinance did was require a restriction to state when the use, if and when the use changed in the future, the appropriate parking would have to be allocated or provided.
So there are certain setbacks then with these wineries that will allow parking around later and, and other things then?
Well, most of the wineries have selected one option or another, understanding that once they, if their use were to change, then the, when the use of a building changes, then the appropriate parking has to be recalculated.
Right, so then, that's, that's a balancing act that a property owner would have to decide, right? So for them, the investment in the parking spots may be worth it, understanding that a winery may not be there forever.
Correct. And, and some of them, the reason they have the larger, you know, they do have more parking, and that would not, then they would have an easier time. We also have the ability for some shared parking arrangements for future-
Reciprocal parking agreements and things like that.
Yes, so there are, there are ways to work with development to make sure, that's one nice thing about an industrial park, where you can have shared parking, or you can have, just like a shopping center, where the lot is for all of the uses within that center.
All set? Okay.
Yeah, to go back on that, when I, those two buildings we're talking about, Loring and, and that was built, that was the rules and regs, that that is a commercial building. And it was a lot more parking lot, and there was a lot of concern about that. One thing, they've been able to use it with their forklifts and everything else, I mean, they haven't, uh, not used a lot of their facilities. In fact, you can bring the semi in and do the loading and unloading in that area, so, uh, but we watched them, and they've grown. We don't need that, they don't need that much acreage. I think what you've done is put it in a, a context of what it is, but you always have to have in the back of your mind, you don't know if it's always going to be there. And so that you can't have it so small that you can't.
Okay, you get one more bite, and then it's my turn.
Mr. Mayor, you're right. I did have some more highlighted areas. Just, just one that I missed.
Okay.
And I, I'm not-
What page?
I just need, I'm sorry, page two of four, bullet point five. Just need some clarification on this. Where we've added the draft language allowing loading spaces to be utilized and counted towards a required parking. Just kind of explain your reasoning for that, why you'd allow a loading space to count it as parking spaces.
Uh, generally, a loading space is an area that is going to be utilized for just a short period of time, uh, and a UPS or something will just come in, and they don't even utilize a, a loading space. So we're just trying to work with, uh, making these things work in a parking lot, so it doesn't impede the circulation, but there is a specific area where the truck can be unloaded if necessary.
Right, I can understand. It just sort of, it sort of defeats the purpose of having a loading space if we're allowing it to be used as a parking lot. But that's, that's okay, I just wanted to know your reasoning behind it.
It's marked as a loading zone. They just count it towards the number of parking spaces required. You can't just park there and stay. Okay, but I get a turn here. Go ahead.
Um, I did have one last question about the tandem parking.
Ah, that's mine.
And so I'll ask my question, and then you don't have, you can wait to answer if you'd like. Um, I guess I'm, I'm having trouble applying that to an example in Lompoc, and so if you could put that in context for me of where that needs to happen, and also, or if where that's been an issue or hasn't been an issue, I just need a little bit more information. Thanks.
Now, that's at the head of my hit parade, so. I just have one question on page six of eleven. It says motorcycle parkings, and then item A, uh, parking device is required to secure bicycles? I'm confused. Is that a typo? Yeah, but bikes are up above that. First, there's bicycle parking, and then there's motorcycle parking, but under motorcycle parking, it talks about bicycle parking.
Thank you for pointing that out. It is a typo, but the requirement, the space requirements are correct.
Okay, so, uh-
Would just be changed.
A minimum of one? If you look up under bicycles, it says a minimum of one space, blah, 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 blah. And if you look under motorcycles, it says exactly the same thing. So a minimum of one space per twenty motor vehicle spaces, uh, shall be provided for motorcycles?
Yes, that's all that's necessary.
Is that what you wanted to say?
Yes.
Okay. So... Okay, and everybody here good with that?
Yeah.
Yep, okay, so in the final motion, we'll include that. Um, let's see. So on the tandem parking, um, let me explain, because I'm the one that started the tandem parking rolling down the road. And one of the reasons that I, I started it rolling down the road is a really long time ago, when I lived in LA, we had tandem parking. And because down there, space is at a premium. And it just, you know, you have to agree with your wife, who's going to park first, based on who's leaving in the morning. So that was sometimes a little bit of a shuttle. The idea behind having tandem parking is that if you have a two- or three-bedroom apartment, you're required to have two parking spaces. But many of, well, most of the small apartment lots in Lompoc are fifty feet wide and a hundred and thirty feet deep. And so if you want to get a greater density on the property, because you have to have a carport, you're only going to get four parking spaces across the back of the lot, because that's, you have to have a five-foot side fire break on both sides of the parking structure. So what that means is that you would be able to have two one-bedroom units and one two- or three-bedroom unit. And if our goal is to increase the amount of density that we have on infill, uh, we need to provide an incentive for someone to build that building. And if, they're going to tear down an old house, and they're going to put in three apartments, there's not a lot of incentive. If, on the other hand, they had tandem parking, and they could put in, um, four two- or three-bedroom units and utilize tandem parking with a two-story apartment structure, now there's an awful lot more revenue that would be available from that change. So the idea here was to be able to allow the fifty-foot and seventy-five-foot lots around town that can't do another parking configuration because the lot's too narrow to utilize tandem parking. And I'm not telling you for sure whether anybody's ever going to do it, but at least it provides them with an opportunity to get some higher density, and it provides us with the off-street parking. Because if you recall in the past, it didn't really matter how many units you were building on a parcel. You could build two stories and twelve units, and you still only had five parking spaces at the back of the property way back when. And you see that on the South Age Street multi-story units. And we don't want to recreate that, but that scenario is what caused things to be built, because they could get some more density and some revenue. So the, the change that I would recommend with this is that tandem parking may be used to satisfy parking on lots of less than, of ten-thousand square feet or less, or legally non-conforming parcels. Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. And is that wording okay, Lucille?
That's what the council wants to see.
Yeah, but I mean, did I word it in a way that's going to work for you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's important, because when somebody has a large enough lot, they need to be responsible for building out the spaces, but it's when you have these smaller lots, and as you said, you know, living in LA, it's just very common. When you have it, it's not the easiest thing to deal with, but it just becomes part of the culture where you live, so I think it's, um, I think it's a, a good solution.
There's a lot of driveways in Lompoc people tandem park because they can't get street parking, so it's kind of happening in an off sense.
Yep. And, you know, when I lived in a house in LA, we, we had one driveway that went into the backyard, and the only way you parked was two cars in the driveway, so.
That brings up a good question, um, that I have, though, and I know we didn't address that, because I don't think it's necessarily a problem in Lompoc as much, but that's the apron parking. Are you familiar with apron parking? It's when somebody's tandem parked, but the second car is covering the city's right-of-way and the sidewalk?
You can't, you can't do that.
It's not permitted.
Right, but I, understanding that the enforcement of that is essentially, I mean, the only, that, it happens, is-
It's complaint-based enforcement.
Complaint-based.
Yep. Um, next one on number three. I think, uh, there's a wording change that needs to happen there. It says tandem parking is not allowed to be located in any required setback area. Tandem parking space is a parking space so located that it is necessary to move one or more cars, except we, up above, we said that tandem was only two cars, so I think it just needs to say move one other vehicle. Does that make sense? Everybody got that? Everybody good with that? And what it's, up above, it says tandem is defined as no more than two vehicles, but this sentence defines it as one or more, and it isn't one or more, it's just one, that you could have to move one other vehicle. Yeah, there, it says up above, no more than two vehicles in number two, but in number three, the wording is different. It's just a word-o.
Yeah, just keep it consistent between the two.
Yeah. That was me, I didn't turn it down, but you can't hear it. Yeah, just hit the wrong button. Now I have to, okay. Um, now, this one is actually more of a question with regard to access of individual parking space on a lot or portion of a lot designated for parking shall be from said lot or portion of lot from a public alleyway or easement. What happens if somebody has a common driveway? Because we have some of those in Lompoc with, um, adjoining apartment units where they each have half the driveway going back into a lot. And I don't think this is, I, I don't know how to address that, so that we don't make something illegal that already exists. And also, we don't eliminate the ability of them to have, um, reciprocal easements. So could we add, unless there's a reciprocal easement in place, for instance, would that be a solution? And I happen to have that in a building I own, where we actually, each of us owns half the driveway, and we have a reciprocal easement.
The reciprocalsment allows access, though.
It allows both of us to use the whole driveway while each of us only, I own the in and he owns the out, but we get to share it.
Right. So, that would be part of the development agreement for the development. But if you wanted to add that language to clarify it, I don't think it would be a problem.
I'm sorry, the door opened. I didn't hear the last part of what you said.
Oh, no, I don't, I just said I didn't think it would be a problem to add the language to clarify, if that's what you'd like to say.
Okay. And how would you recommend adding that to item F unless there's a reciprocal easement in place?
That would be adequate, I think.
Okay. Everybody good with that?
Mayor, can you give an example of where that exists?
Uh, my industrial building. But it, it, it exists at a lot of, um, places where you have, like, you'll have two apartment buildings and they're each, over on this side of the lot, in the center of the lot, you have one driveway that services both of their parking. And one apartment building owns half the driveway and one apartment building owns the other half of the driveway.
There's some cul-de-sacs in town that have a common driveway that go up into them.
Yeah, into more than one property. It's, it's a root, I wouldn't say it's a common practice, but there's a lot of them around. And, and again, with smaller lots, it can be a solution to creating parking where you can, you can each own half the driveway, but you, you can't take the other person's half away. In other words, it's, it's there for eternity.
Right, but as long as we're not creating, I mean, if their side is full and your side is full, having that-
It's just a driveway. It's not a parking area. It's just a driveway.
Got it.
Okay, I'm writing what I think is right, but I think we understand that the staff has the ability to wordsmith it the way they want. And the last one has to do with parking and front yard setback. And I, you know, I'm not opposed to that, but the, one of the things that people have talked about, and I can't even tell you how many phone calls, is the requirement for a paved area. And I'm not against a paved area, but right now, our definition of a paved area is cement or asphalt. And we either need to amend the definition so that a parking area can be done with pavers, for instance. Um, yeah, gravel is kind of an issue and the city staff talked me out of that a while back, but pavers are a good option. And do, would we want to change this to paved area including pavers? Or do we need to put it in the definition? Or how do we need to accomplish that best?
Um, in conversations with the city engineer, the way that we looked at a paved area, uh, engineered permeable pavement is a paved area. So, it's covered, uh, in the language that exists in the ordinance.
Nope. Because people came, have come in and tried to put pavers in and been told no.
Just pavers are not permitted. You can't just put pavers over the ground. It needs to be, the area needs to be paved and it needs to be prepared. And it needs to be structurally sound so that it will support the automobile or the truck traffic on it. That's why engineered permeable pavement is allowed and would be permitted.
Okay. I think we need to include pavers because the difficulty that we're having is we're after people to get their recreational vehicles and trailers off the street, but the only thing that we allow them to do is put in a two- or $3,000 slab as opposed to being able to go over to Home Depot and buy pavers and set pavers on sand and be done with it. And that's, that's my goal here. And that's been a constant discussion.
The only problem I have with that, you've got to have a good foundation. And, uh, if you just have sand down there, then that foundation's not going to hold up under bed. Once, once, eventually we'll have a lot of rain. And, uh, so, you've got to have some type of foundation built with that. Yeah, I, I don't mind the pavers and however you want to do it, but you've got to make sure how it's developed and put in there, it's got to have the compaction and such to go with it.
Yeah. Well, what I would say to that is one of the advantages of pavers is that they settle. You pull them out and put some more sand in and put them back. Bob?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I agree with Councilmember Humdol. I, I would not want us to just say that someone can go down to Home Depot and get some, uh, pavers, throw them on the grass and consider it, uh, paved space. I believe Ms. Breeze said that it is an ordinance that they can use pavers. It's just that we want it done right. We want to have it, it prepared right. We know it, I'm assuming we're going to have an engineer go out and take a look at it.
Well, there would be engineered plans that are presented because there's, you have gravel beneath it, the ground is prepared so that the structural element supports what you're putting in. And that is, uh, that would be approved by our engineering, our city engineer as an acceptable method of creating driveways. Um, just the pavers do wear down and that becomes an aesthetic problem and a maintenance problem, uh, as they deteriorate when you put heavy loads on them.
So, I think, uh, to the public that wants to put pavers in, we have, they have an option to use pavers. It's just that if they're going to use the pavers, they have to be done right, so.
This is a permitted use then to use pavers?
No.
You're allowed to use permeable pavement.
That's asphalt that leaks water or concrete that leaks water through. You are not allowed to use pavers, period, end. And let me illustrate the difference, what you're saying, Bob. So, we're encouraging people to get vehicles off the streets and for perhaps, uh, seven-hundred-fifty or a thousand bucks, they can put a pad in to put their trailer on. Okay? If, on the other hand, they're going to go through the process that Lucille was talking about, first you're going to pull out earth and you're going to recompact it. And they're going to bring in road base and you're going to compact the road base. And then you're going to bring in either asphalt or concrete and you're going to put that in. And now you created a $10,000 parking pad. That's what you did. So, if we truly want people to get their vehicles off the streets, we need to provide a viable way for them to do it. If, on the other hand, we want to write them tickets, then I recommend we leave this in just the way it is because that truly is successful. That's the, that's the long and the short of it. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mayor Lynn. That's my concern as well. Um, and I'm curious, in the small research that I did, I did see that there were other cities that did allow pavers. And I didn't know, maybe this one issue we can put off and find out some more information, um, you know, what the standard is for other cities. Just because I know that there are, maybe not many, but we can find out how other folks, um, address this issue.
Well, my goal was to fix this when we got to here. So, I'd like to fix it because I've told people, wait patiently and we'll discuss it when we get to parking. So, here we are. I'd be happy to have all of them call you.
You know, I, I'd tell you, there's a pro and a con on this that I see. I, I know there are probably people in town that would paver their whole yard. And I, I'm thinking that there should possibly be a maximum square footage allowed for your own pavers. Now, I don't think you're going to put a forty-six-foot bounder in your yard. So, I mean, you would take the basic dimensions of what would fit in a yard and allow that as a paver vice somebody paving the whole yard and we're covering the yard with vehicles on pavers.
Probably three hundred square feet would be more than adequate for almost all vehicles. That would be ten wide and thirty long and that accommodates most vehicles. That's a good suggestion. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mayor Lynn. I just wanted to read quickly from the city of Las Vegas. Um, it says if your property is zoned, and then they list some of their zoning designations, including R1, for example, you're allowed to park or store argies or trailers on surface of paver blocks of uniform appearance that are at least two inches thick, or use concrete or asphalt, gravel or chat that extends the full length and width of the RV or trailer.
That's a nice ordinance. I don't know about gravel or chat in Lompoc given our water, but, um-
I don't know what that was also.
Maybe it's pea gravel by a different name. A chat? Two people talking about pavers? Sure. Okay, so-
It also allows for decomposed granite, uh, for certain zoning areas as well, as long as it's no less than two inches thick with the defined borders. And I'm not saying that these are necessarily viable options for Lompoc, just giving an example of what another community does.
Councilmember Starbuck?
I, I think that an ordinance to red like that and that we would also, I think that the square footage is important in it because I could see it becoming easily abused. You know, I, I think, you know, three hundred, that would be a thirty-by-ten pad, um, very doable on most lots and-
I think it's important, though, that that is not less than the size that is needed or whatever it is that they're parking there.
Well, they, they have to be able, the, the pad has to be big enough to park the item. So, that, yeah, it would have to be that big.
Right, no less than three hundred square feet it would be then. I don't know, that seems kind of arbitrary. I'm not sure where you got that number. I'm, you know, I don't know necessarily dimensions, but-
Well, no, what he was talking about was a maximum size. So, you had, you could build up to three hundred square feet, but you couldn't build more than that. So, you couldn't paverize your whole front yard, for instance. Paverize? New word. Okay, well, so how about upon a paved area or for the storage of a vehicle in area of pavers not to exceed three hundred square feet? How's that work?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Would someone be able to put six vehicles that way?
Well, I don't think you'd get six vehicles on three hundred square feet.
So, the limitation of three hundred square feet isn't per vehicle, it's per the whole property, the whole lot.
Fifth point. Square hundred feet for property, for parcel.
I don't know. I guess I would just, again, I, I wish we had a, a city engineer here. That probably would be very helpful because they'd be able to give us the feedback on whether this is a reasonable dimension to be discussing and, and how we could word this.
Well, I was thinking of the average motor home, which is in the thirty-ish foot range or, so if it were, if it was a ten-by-thirty pad, that would be three hundred. If it was an eight-by-thirty-five pad, that would be too much math for me. I don't have my calculator.
But I think the concern here is it won't just be RVs. It's, it's any recreational, so technically, if it was a small boat, you could have as many small boats lined up on this pad as would be allowed for the space.
Well, you, I don't think you're going to get more than, on a, on a thirty-foot pad, you might get two really small boats. Really small. Cause-
But I, but I heard you say vehicle in your definition.
Well, a trailer is a vehicle. So, you could have, you could have, you could have two, two really small fishing boats on trailers, but it would have to be a ten-foot boat that they put on trailers. So, I think you'd end up with a boat, a trailer, a motor home on three hundred square feet per parcel.
If I may ask a question, but isn't there a provision that you can't have a trailer in the, oh, no, if it's unpaved, you can't have the trailer? That's right.
Yeah. If it's not paved, you can't have anything. Has to be on a paved surface. And that's the struggle that we end up with. Um, I don't know who's next. Dwayne?
Yeah, it all sounds good, but you're going to wind up making every lot in town that you can put a boat or a mobile home on out front. So, it doesn't improve the neighborhood. And, uh, we're trying to clean up the neighborhood a little bit, we hope. But I, I just can't go on with, I think if we're going to do it, you do it right. And if you can't afford to do it, then store it.
Next.
I was just going to throw out there, you know, that we, you flip the page, it starts talking about the screening and some of the other ways to, to make them less obvious from the street.
Yeah, probably not going to happen in a front yard, though, and that's where these issues are. Bob?
I agree with Councilmember Humdol. I think we're just creating a mess. We're not going to be cleaning up anything. We're just going to allow messes in our front yards. So, I'd be against this.
Okay, so let's just have our, our straw count on whether we want to go forward with this or not. I, I'm a yes.
Mayor Lynn, I would like to go forward, but I would like more information from the city engineer. So, I'd be more than happy when we receive that feedback to say yes. Um, but at this time, I don't think I have the adequate information to say yes.
Okay, I think we're voting on this tonight, so it's kind of now or never.
I think that that's, I think that that's, um, very unfortunate.
Okay, so it's never. Next.
I just had a quick thing. I want to interject here. It, maybe then rather than just kill this whole thing, try it on a smaller scale than three hundred square foot.
It won't solve anything because that's, you know, the average motor home is twenty-six feet. That's what we're at.
Then, the average person that owns one that's twenty-seven should go rent a spot to hide it. And the smaller ones, you know, you have your little pop-up trailer, you have your, your small lake boat, you have these other things. I mean, I, I think that a small step here would probably be better than just saying, no, forget it.
I agree. I think that this is something that can be resolved. And, uh, you know, part of that is figuring out what the correct dimensions are acceptable.
Okay, so the, the issue is still the same. We need to either move forward on it now or we need to kick the can down to July and add it to the list of things we want to talk about then. And-
With something this minor, Ms. Breeze, is this something that we could close the public hearing, which we do not have to reopen, correct, city attorney, and provide the information? And even, you know what, I, it probably even could be consent calendar, but I would like, you know, we could have a, an agenda item where we don't have to reopen the public hearing and we can add it to an agenda that will already have other, um, planning topics such as, uh, April ninth.
I don't know that we'd be able to get back information for April ninth. Those reports are already in process. We could certainly, if you have specific questions that you would like the, uh, city engineer to analyze, we could, uh, bring that back to the council. Perhaps the first meeting in May.
The first meeting in May.
Do we have another item at that time? Do we have another planning, another general plan item at that time?
We have, the next general plan meeting would be May fourteenth.
So, it would be, it would be more appropriate to have it at that time?
May fourteenth.
Yeah. Okay. And what, what noticing would we need to do to be able to rehear that question on that date?
What I'm hearing is a consensus to continue this matter until May fourteen?
I don't want to continue the whole thing. I'd like to vote and get this done because I think it holds up the staff. Could we then just bring back that one little tidbit to discuss at that meeting?
So, what I'm understanding is you'd like to have the ordinance introduced tonight as it's set here with that other, with the other changes.
Yeah.
And then, and then that will come for a second reading at the neck, at your next meeting on the sixteenth. By May fourteenth, it won't quite be effective, but you could, you, on the fourteenth, and what I'm hearing is you'd like to have another item on the agenda. That would be another ordinance to amend this code provision that you just adopted. That, that's the process that you're hearing. If you're going to pass this ordinance tonight, that's the way to handle that.
Um, I'm, I'm back to my original statement, which is if we can't fix it tonight, I think we should move it to our July discussion of the left open, of the items that we're not talking about because our goal is to advance this and go forward. And although I feel strongly about this, I don't feel anywhere near as strongly about this as I do about getting this done and going forward because of all the uncertainty. So, I, I'm, since it's my idea, I would just like to put it on our July calendar of, of the things we're going to talk about after the general plan is done, including those industrial downzonings. We can, we can throw this in then.
Ms. Breeze, um, in staff's point of view, would you agree that that would be the easiest route? Or would you agree that keeping this, or tabling this item until May fourteenth would be the easiest route?
It's at the pleasure of the council. If we do not act on the ordinance this evening and come, continue it until May fourteenth, you can adjust, uh, that portion of this ordinance in whatever way you see to be appropriate. If we adopt the ordinance, then as the city attorney indicated, it would be another text amendment to the ordinance that would have to start through the process.
Yeah, I'd like to get it done in May.
How about if we try this? Um, after you're done discussing this item, continue the matter, but only for the purpose of discussing this one item. And then, on that night, you can introduce the ordinance. I mean, you can always change your mind if you want to that night, but at least you'll have set a, a direction to yourself.
Yeah, and, and I don't want to hold the staff up in moving forward on other things. Okay, I think that's a good solution. Everybody like that?
Yeah.
I think that's a good solution, everybody like that solution?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, I have one last question, on, one of 10 on the actual document, the parking regulations attachment number cutoff, city, city council staff report, text amendment, TA 12-dash cutoff, April 2nd. It's, it's this one here, so it's a ways back in the book? No, it's the, it's the, let's see, it's the underline and strikeout. Yeah, it's the underline and strikeout, on item C, "When a structure is enlarged or when a change in its use requires..." Let me give you a couple of examples, and you tell me if this is what change of use means, "A retail store is operating in a building, and another retail store selling retail goods comes in, is that a change of use or a change of occupancy?"
Use is a land use term, and occupancy is in the building code, so if it is a retail-to-retail, it would be, would not be a change of either use or occupancy.
Okay, and if someone is making widgets in an industrial building, and another company comes in and they make gadgets, is that a change of use or not?
That would be manufacturing, so it would be an industrial use.
And it's not just, it's not just a change of use, it's a change of use that requires more off-street parking.
Well, I'm trying to figure out what the change of use is that requires more off-street parking.
Going from the widgets to selling hats.
I guess I, that's the part that has been a bone of contention in the past, and I wanna understand what this says.
Going from selling widgets and selling hats, going from making widgets to selling hats, that's a change in use.
Okay, so...
That's industrial to commercial, sorry, Mayor.
Yeah, so, making hats to wholesaling hats, those are both the industrial uses, that wouldn't be a change, that would not be a change in use particularly. I'm, I'm struggling to understand this, so bear with me, what, what's, what's caused these issues in the past is, someone has a retail store, and, I'm trying to think of a good example, and they were selling clothing, and then they had a retail store, and they put in Jazzercise. And I'm not picking on Jazzercise, but I remember that it was some kind of, something like that, and that triggered all kinds of problems, with this wording, would that trigger some problem for them to reassess their parking, or is retail retail?
I think what you're speaking to is, if it's a use that's permitted in a commercial zone, that is the land use planning issue, and going from retail sales to an assembly use certainly could trigger a change to the parking requirement, because if you went from retail sales to a church, or retail sales to a community center, you would have a higher parking requirement. Additionally, in the building side of it, if you go from a retail use and you go to an assembly use, both fire and building would have additional requirements as far as ADA bathrooms, assembly requires certain exiting and hardware on the doors, there's requirements when you change those types of uses that need to be looked at.
Yeah, but those are usually internal to the building, and so you can do it, but if you all of a sudden have to add parking spaces to a fully built-out lot, that's where you kinda trip over it.
And there are, there are provisions where we do have, if, it depends on if it's in a shopping center, then you've got shared use, we did when Seledi's came in and they changed from a bank to a restaurant, they had requirements for additional parking on an established site where they only had a set number, they were able to have consolidated parking with Union Bank, because of the difference in hours, Union Bank allowed them to share their parking, and so generally, you can do something within 300 feet, that's what the ordinance allows.
Okay, now, last question with regard to that, you have a manufacturing building that exists, and it has X number of parking spaces, and that's how it was built at some point long ago in the past, and they have, they have what would be considered a light manufacturing use in there now, but they don't have adequate parking now, I mean, the pre-existing use doesn't have an adequate parking for light manufacturing, and they go to another light manufacturing use, or even a heavy manufacturing use, how do they resolve their issue, or is it not an issue because it was pre-existing non-conforming?
If the use continues, and if someone...
Well, I think, I think if the use is, there's a different tenant, that's what's kinda been the question in the past.
But there, there was an existing use, they were manufacturing something, whatever that manufacturing.
Yeah, cabinet manufacturer, for instance.
And they did not have enough parking...
Ever.
Ever, but they were there, and they were operating, if someone comes in with a similar use of that, there, it's, it's just a continuing legal non-conforming use.
Okay, and a lot of these buildings have had 20 different uses over the foreseeable past, so they could have any of those 20 similar uses going forward, yeah, I think of one building, and there was a cabinet shop in there, there was an automotive repair in there, and there was a, I don't know what they made, there was a little small manufacturing company, and they've all been in that building over the years, in the, in the 32 years I've been here, and today, there's a wine storage in there, for instance, no tasting room, just wine storage, so those, those are all similar uses.
They would be an industrial use that would be continuing, the industrial use would be continuing in that building, and so there would be no change, and there would be no additional parking requirement.
Okay, thank you.
Does it, excuse me if I may ask, doesn't, doesn't it depend on if there was a vacancy for a period of time?
But he said that use continued, as long as it was...
Well, no, it's been vacant more than one time over the years.
If, if it ceases for six months, then that's a difference.
So, if you had an industrial use, or for that matter, an assembly use, that had been longstanding, and it was vacant for six months, and you didn't have, you couldn't meet the current parking standard, then you couldn't put back the use that used to be there, is that what you're telling me?
No, you could, but you would have to, we have a provision in our code whereby the planning commission can allow a building use to be, even if it's substandard in a development standard, that a conditional use permit will allow that use to continue.
But they would have to come and get a conditional use permit?
Right.
Don't ever be vacant for six months. Okay. I think that's my list, anybody else got anything? Okay, so, city attorney, would you tell us what motion we should make to move forward, please?
I suggest looking at the agenda, that you at least take the action to receive and, receive the planning commission recommendation, that you certify the negative declaration, and then, you continue this matter till, when was it, March, May 14th? May 14th, for the sole purpose of discussing whether or not, how to deal with the pavers on, parking on pavers, or whether or not to allow parking on pavers.
I'm still writing what you said. Okay, I move what he said, and I wrote it down. Oh, yeah.
And we also have to add something about including the changes we've made.
Including the changes that we made, okay, anybody wanna talk to us now? No? Okay. I move what he said, plus including the changes that we made, and I'd be looking for a second.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion.
Only thing I wanna make sure, we're not adopting the issue about the pavers.
No, we're, that's, that's what we're gonna talk, that's coming on the 14th, we're adopting everything.
But that, no, okay.
We're moving, we're, no, we're not adopting anything, we're going to limit discussion on the 14th to that item, is that correct?
And then the item will be before you for introduction, that same night?
Yes. Okay, everybody got what he said that I moved? Any further discussion? Could we vote, please? That passes 5-0, thank you, and now we'll take a seven-minute break, okay, everybody find their seats, if you don't like the seats you had before, there's plenty of others. So, every once in a while, it's really important to find out what you've accomplished, and once a year is a pretty good time, and we're a little behind on this, because we ended up working very diligently on the grant application for the motorsports park, so tonight I'm gonna do what I should've done in February, better late than never, so, good evening, tonight I will share with you what this council, working as a team with the city administrator and the city staff, has accomplished in the last year, and it's almost all good news. In December of 2010, after being sworn in, that council held three workshops to create goals for the following two years, again, after the 2012 election, this council reviewed the 2010 goals that were not yet completed, and added new goals for the next two years. Economic development continues to be the number-one council objective, we must bring jobs to Lompoc residents that are unemployed or work out of town, which will then bring revenue to the city, increasing city revenues will in turn provide funds to improve police, fire, parks, and other city services. In 2011, the city council took several key steps to create the foundation for our successful economic development program, first, the council established the Single Purpose Committee that created recommendations to streamline the planning, engineering, building, and permitting process, and the council adopted them, second, the council hired Broadspec to operate our building department, they have a written approval time guarantee for our customers, and a commitment to facilitate rather than complicate projects. Third, the council combined the positions of Economic Development Director with Assistant City Administrator, who also oversees the planning department, Teresa Gallivan filled this position in September of 2011, and has achieved amazing results in only 18 months. Fourth, the council created the Economic Development Committee with 15 members from all segments of the community to spearhead economic development. Fifth, working with all our city staff, Laurel Barcelona, our city administrator, created the Charter of Excellence Customer Service Program, this citywide program guides all of us in providing excellent service every time we help the residents. To accomplish these goals, and many others, plus take care of our regular city business, in 2012, this council held 34 meetings, to prepare for those meetings, the city staff prepared 135 staff reports, from 2 to 100 pages, and the city administrator read and improved every one. When all these changes were implemented by the council and the city staff in 2011, we were sure that we would bring great results, but economic development takes time, and in 2012, the results were simply amazing. First, the long-vacant Greco 72,000-square-foot factory building at the east entrance to Lompoc was purchased with the concept of putting in two wineries and a huge climate-controlled wine storage warehouse, today, I'm happy to report that because of the positive actions of the city and the demand for winery space, the plan was enhanced, and the building will soon house five tasting rooms and five wineries, and a lot less cold storage space. This building at the east entry to our community will be a great asset to the wine ghetto, and the outside of it's gonna be exciting when you see it. In early 2012, Teresa began working with Marshals to bring their discount department store to Lompoc, which opened in September. Next, two supermarket chains came to Lompoc to look at locations, one of the things that drew both of them here was the can-do attitude of the city of Lompoc staff, in December, Grocery Outlet opened to serve the east side, and last month, Dollar General opened to serve the west side, along the way, Walmart began their long-discussed expansion to increase their merchandise selection. The largest job gain of the year was the decision by Denmat to move from Santa Maria to Lompoc, this move is almost complete, and they are already expanding their business with two recent purchases of other businesses. After only six months of planning, Rocket Town Chrysler Dodge and Jeep broke ground two weeks ago, with plans to complete the construction in only 72 days, we are particularly grateful for their focus on hiring almost exclusively local contractors. Also under construction is a $17 million remodel of our old hospital into the Hero's Center for the, for treatment of police, fire, and military personnel with alcohol and drug issues. This February, SpaceX activated their launch pad at Vandenberg Air Force Base in preparation for their first launch this summer, all of the SpaceX employees live in the Lompoc Valley, and I would add, many people live in the Lompoc Valley, now work for SpaceX, SpaceX will launch six polar orbiting satellites over the next 12 months, which will bring more workers and guests to Lompoc for those launches, Vandenberg is the only location from which SpaceX will launch for polar orbits, SpaceX has the capacity to double the number of launches per year. The Hancock College Police, Fire, and EMS Training Facility will be completed this fall, last week, an industry representative from the Oil Industry Safety Training Organization met with the college and community representatives, she was a graduate of Texas A&amp;M University, which is known for their state-of-the-art public safety training facilities, she was amazed at the Hancock facility and said it was equal to Texas A&amp;M, this Hancock facility will bring a minimum of 6,000 students to Lompoc in 2014, and is a state-of-the-art facility nationwide. In the fall, the Lompoc Unified School District was applying for a grant for a compressed natural gas fueling station for the public and their buses, the grant application had been delayed by them, and the city staff moved the plan through the approval process as quickly as possible to make the grant deadline, we really worked hard for them. This will be the first public C&amp;G fueling station in northern Santa Barbara County, C&amp;G cars can save Lompoc commuters about $150 per month in fuel costs, which will increase local disposable income, C&amp;G is the motor vehicle fuel of the future that is taking over the trucking industry, and it generates up to 40% less greenhouse gases than gasoline and diesel, it has been forecast that the transition of the electric power industry from coal to natural gas, and the transition in transportation industry to C&amp;G will reduce greenhouse gas levels to 1976 levels in five years, I'm very proud that Lompoc is leading the way. Now for something no one knows, this evening, I'm pleased to announce that the long-vacant Unical Station at Ocean Avenue and A Street will close escrow the middle of this month, the station will be fully remodeled to a conserve fuel station, Conserve Fuel has recently, has a recently remodeled station on Highway 246 near 101 in Buellton, as well as stations located in Santa Maria and San Luis Obispo. Although they had initially decided against the Lompoc location, after I caught them down there and brought them to City Hall, Teresa, the planning staff, and the building department all talked to them, they reconsidered and purchased the station because of our positive, helpful, can-do attitude, that's the reason they did it. Our Economic Development Committee identified... Our Economic Development Committee identified sports tourism as an economic development opportunity for Lompoc and won into action. First, the committee spearheaded the installation of a timing system at the Aquatic Center to bring swim meets to Lompoc. Then they identified the need to upgrade the turf at the JM Park Fields to bring baseball tournaments to Lompoc. Both of these projects have already been completed. In total, these large projects and many other small ones have created over nine hundred new jobs in the Lompoc Valley. We accomplished these amazing results because all of the staff of the city and all of the council members are focused on economic development and friendly customer service. The proof of our customer service results is that when I first became mayor, I sent a personal thank-you note to every city employee who was complimented by one of our customers. By the time 2012 began, I did not have enough time to write all the notes, as I received almost daily calls and letters complimenting the city staff. This Monday was no exception, as I received one letter and two phone calls complimenting our staff. Along the way, we took care of some problems, my favorites, graffiti and the patchwork paintouts that made you feel like you were in the middle of a crime wave, and we began the battle to take back our parks from the gophers, which we're still fighting. In January, the city administrator implemented a council-approved reorganization that eliminated two department heads and streamlined city positions. During the year, the fire department was awarded, I'm sorry, the police department was awarded grant funds for three officers for three years, and the fire department competed for and award, was awarded a grant for six firefighters. After many years of design and construction, our state-mandated regional wastewater plant was completed. Also, after many years of planning and construction, the beautiful Dick Dewey's Community and Senior Center was completed, and it always receives rave reviews from out-of-town visitors. One project stalled by the downturn in the economy was the Charlotte's Web Children's Library. In 2012, the library board came up with an innovative and affordable solution, and the Charlotte's Web Bookmobile was born. It will soon bring books to children all over Lompoc. I've now shared with you just a few of the hundred-plus projects that your council and your city staff accomplished in 2012. Sadly, we could have gotten much more done and had more tools to use had Governor Brown not eliminated the Lompoc Redevelopment Agency. Throughout 2012, the council and the staff expended thousands of hours on state, on the state-mandated dissolution of the Lompoc Redevelopment Agency. The city was a victim three times over by the governor's elimination of redevelopment. First, our best economic development tool and last substantial source of dollars was taken away. Second, downtown projects that were underway were canceled. Third, and most importantly, thousands of hours of staff and council time that could have been used to improve Lompoc, rather than doing reports for a state agency to read, were wasted. Some cities abuse redevelopment programs, but Lompoc was not one of them. For all the lost potential and all the lost staff time, the county and the state, at the end of the day, will get a check for a little over three million dollars. The wind-down of redevelopment is almost over, and we're working on many exciting other economic development opportunities, which I can't share with you or you know what happens. It's important for you to know that businesses are coming to Lompoc to look because this council and this city staff have created a reputation as a business-friendly city. I can't stress this enough. Our success is accelerating because the council and the staff have created a business-friendly environment, which will continue to improve as we go forward. Now, on behalf of the council, I want to thank the residents of Lompoc for focusing on shopping in Lompoc. Before any new store openings, and because of our community effort to spend dollars in Lompoc, we have had seven consecutive quarters of sales tax income increases for the city. Without this additional income, we would have had to make more cuts as the state continued to take money from the city in 2012. It's kind of like fighting an open hatch. Nonprofit organizations also have had a huge impact on our valley, providing a wide range of benefits in 2012. The Fallen Warriors Committee that funded and placed a flagpole at Beatty Park to remember our military fallen warriors is now planning the construction of a large memorial on the park hilltop overlooking the valley. The nine-hole disc golf course at Beatty Park, with a small amount of funds from the city that Councilmember Starbuck found, and a lot of work from the Disc Golf Committee, has expanded to eighteen holes. The Disc Golf Course is used every day by all ages. The construction of the BMX Dirt Bicycle Track for the youth of Lompoc was approved by this city council and is underway, special thanks to the Healthy Lompoc Coalition, the Lompoc Rotary, and the Santa Barbara Foundation for fully funding this BMX park. It will be the finest BMX park between LA and San Jose. The Lompoc Motorsports Committee, which is working to bring in one-eighth-mile dragstrip and three motocross tracks for motorcycles and quads, has made great strides recently. Last month, working with the city staff, a fifty-cc kids' fun motorcycle and quad park was built in three days. This free city park is open weekends to kids twelve and under to ride and is staffed with trained committee members. Simultaneously, the city filed for a nearly one-million-dollar State Parks Off-Road Vehicle Grant to build the off-road vehicle park adjoining the Lompoc Airport. The committee also filed for a small grant to facilitate running the fifty-cc park. Last week, the committee received several large donations from Immeris and two anonymous individuals, which raised the balance of matching funds for the twelve-thousand-five-hundred-dollar Challenge Grant for the Chumash Tribe. So we made the match, thanks to all who have contributed to the Motorsports Park and attended their fundraisers. The nonprofit working to bring the California Space Enterprise on city land next to Hancock College has submitted their performance to the city and is preparing to submit their funding plan for this multi-phase project. This museum, education, Launch View, and Space Enterprise Center was first proposed by the California Space Authority, I think in nineteen ninety-seven. It could potentially provide up to two thousand five hundred jobs in the Lompoc Valley, and it was also provide, in conjunction with Hancock College, space-based education for fifth grade through the four years of college on the same site. Today, I was contacted by a group working with this, a similar facility in New Mexico, who would like to help us with ours also. All of the services provided by all the Lompoc Valley nonprofits are simply irreplaceable. These groups truly represent who we are as a community. In December of 2012, the council began its goal-setting process for the twenty thirteen, fourteen calendar years. In the goal-setting process, the council identified thirty-three goals from twenty eleven, twelve that we carried forward, and a hundred and two new goals. With the elimination of the workload for the RDA dissolution, the council, city staff, and council committees will have more time to work on council improvements for Lompoc. For the twenty thirteen, fourteen council year, the council kept the same priorities in a slightly changed order as follows. Number one, economic development and jobs. Number two, public safety, adequate police and fire services. Number three, efficiencies to save cost and speed up results. Number four, accountability, compliance, and transparency. Number five, code enforcement and graffiti abatement, and of course, number six, everything that's left. The council, city administrator, city staff, and everyone in Lompoc should be very, very proud of all we have accomplished together. We have made these improvements in our city during the worst economy in seventy years. We have also constantly had to deal with issues beyond our control and create solutions. We have lived within our means with a balanced budget in twenty eleven, thirteen, and our new budget for thirteen, fifteen will be balanced. We continue to have budget challenges, compliments of the state of California, but we will continue to adopt and overcome these challenges. Over the last thirty years, the state of California has taken away revenue or increased costs to our city that have taken away forty percent of our city budget. In the last twenty years, state-mandated costs for Lompoc residents exceed over one-quarter billion dollars, which we have already paid for or will continue to pay for the next thirty years. So when you wonder why we struggle, it's the state of California. In twenty thirteen, building on our work from twenty eleven and twenty twelve, Lompoc will be a better place to work, play, live, or open a business. As I said last year, and I do not know what unknown issues wait for us in twenty thirteen, but I am sure that as, as this council and staff did in twenty eleven and twenty twelve, we will conquer every issue and continue our improvement plans for the city of Lompoc. We just keep getting more good news because we work hard to earn it every day. Thank you for your attention. And written communications? Nothing. Oral communications? Anybody out there? Last two minutes? Gone once, gone twice, gone? Uh, council requests, comments, and meeting reports from the right.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I think I have any reports.
Councilmember Starbuck.
I'm not going to make any reports, but I did have a council request. I'd like to, to open up on the sixteenth of April, a review and a discussion about the space, the space center.
They're coming in with a presentation, and I think it's probably to the city staff, and I think it would be too close for the sixteenth of April.
There's one shown, but it's not dated for the updated layout master plan, but there were some other things I thought maybe as a council we should discuss.
I think we might probably have to get that over to the fourth of May, or the first meeting in May.
Mayor and council, we are targeting the sixteenth to bring to you whatever brief or status update we can bring to you.
Oh, okay.
Well, I, mine's very simple. One is that I want to thank Hyundai Company for the advertising you were talking about, come to Lompoc and shop. I don't know if anybody's paid attention, that's an excellent commercial, and they're very positive. It's nice to have a business in Lompoc being positive about come to Lompoc to shop, and I just want to thank you for that kind of work. The other thing is that we've had some excellent reports at Chamber Commerce and other places on the Hancock facility, and there's been a lot of feedback. The interesting thing, though, is that we need to get it to Santa Barbara because there's a lot of people in Santa Barbara who don't even know what we have up here.
Um, just a few things. The first is I attended the Empty Bowls event, uh, which is a fundraiser put on by the Food Bank of Santa Barbara County, and that was great as usual. I took home a beautiful bowl, and, uh, the ticket price went up, but that's, of course, okay because they're making that money that they need to disseminate the food, including here in Lompoc. So that was a great event. I also went to the Community Action Commission's annual champions dinner, and the reason I wanted to mention that is as a board member, I go to a lot of their events, but this one, um, is special to me because in previous years, they had honored Al Walker, and so, Cecilia Walker was present, and they were able to commemorate him and what he had done for the organization, which was really great. And then in addition to that, um, all the proceeds from the dinner went to their Youth Corps program, which, as you know, services Lompoc, and in fact, a lot of what, um, the discussion was that evening in their presentation was really using Lompoc as the example of how much it can impact a community. So they were, of course, trying to convince folks why, you know, they should donate, and there was a, um, a young couple who had overcome so much, and they both were participating in the Youth Corps, and they have a child, and there was, you know, drug abuse and rehabilitation. There was this big story, um, and it was very moving, and so, uh, you know, again, just tying it back to Lompoc and the fact that we're a community where it really works, uh, was great. So, because Lompoc's usually not recognized, you know, for those kinds of things county-wide. So I was excited about that. And then, um, two other things. Lastly, I leave tomorrow for Pasadena, where I will be until Friday at city expense because I will be at the League of California Cities Policy Committee meeting for the Tax and Revenue Committee and the Community Services Policy Committee. The last thing I want to talk about, um, is that, uh, Marilyn, I, I, it's really great to hear everything that's going great at one time. I, it reinvigorates us, and it gets us excited, and I think that that's good to feel like we are making some headway. Um, but one area in which I've been receiving, it's funny, we hear less complaints maybe about certain things, about business or retail places to shop, and then you start hearing more about maybe other topics. And so what I've been hearing a lot lately is about our second priority, and that's public safety, primarily in regards to, um, gang and drug issues in our community. So I don't know how we want to address that, if that's something we want to address, but I would hate to leave this council after four years and not have put some specific effort towards that issue. I know it's big, and I know there's a lot of other things in the forefront that we need to be talking about, um, but I, I, I just, I'm not sure that we are putting all of our efforts, um, in the right direction within the departments, and I want to make sure that, uh, we have a comprehensive and cohesive plan to deal with these things and maybe get some more community interaction in that. I know there's been efforts, like I said, coffee with police officers, and there's, you know, our, our police and fire chief are amazing, and they're very involved in the community, but like I said, I would hate to have left after four years and not have said this is an issue that we somehow need to broach, and I know we don't know the solution, but anyway.
Well, maybe you could have a sit-down with our police chief and come back with, with some information. You could be the go-get-it gal.
I will do that. Um, I'm more than happy to do that with hopes that if I return and feel that we need an agenda item, that I would get support on that.
Sure. Come back and tell us what you learned. Okay. Um, I went to the Empty Bowls, and it was a great event. I got a cool bowl, too. It now holds, uh, clips in my closet. The, uh, and then Councilmember Home Doll was there because we shared a bowl of soup together. Um, this week, I will be traveling also at the expense of SB CAG. I am the CalCog representative, so I'm going to go represent us. And, um, I have, well, an announcement for next, but I didn't bring it with me. Is it Monday or Tuesday, the Energy Summit for Northern Santa Barbara County?
The Economic Alliance of Northern Santa Barbara County is having a California Energy Action Summit taking place on April the twelfth.
There you go.
Um, you can find them at calenergysummit.org. They're also on Facebook and Twitter. Um, so, yeah, anybody who's interested in attending, you register online, calenergysummit.org. Um, there is going to be some amazing speakers, including state senators, um, and some leaders in, uh, both petroleum industry as well as the, uh, green technologies industry, so it should be some really great discussion. Also, UCSB and USC are both going to be presenting studies, um, about the potential impact of Monterey Shale resource development in California and in our county. So really interesting, and I suggest, highly suggest that everybody goes to that event, calenergysummit.org.
See? She had all the details.
Do you agree with that, Mr. Mayor? Uh? Do you agree with what she said?
Absolutely. It's, it's going to be amazing news, and if there is one thing that could bail California and all of the cities out of the financial nightmare we find ourselves in, that's the one that could turn the corner for us. And we have a great deal of resources here in Santa Barbara County, and we, right here, are sitting on the Monterey Shale. Hopefully, it's quite a ways down. Um, the last thing is kind of an urgent appeal for all of you who are out there in TV land, since it's not really late. Um, no. A, a year ago, as the number of violations at Surf Beach was going up, I arranged to meet with the Air Force. Unfortunately, by the time I got to meet with him, the beach was already closed. And I said, now I want you guys to get ahold of me next year because I'm going to show you how to solve this problem, because I remember what we did years ago that kept lots of people from wandering into the restricted area. And they said, oh, yeah, we'll get ahold of you first thing. Well, first thing was, uh, last Friday. And by last Friday, they had fifteen violations, and there was one more while I was there. Uh, they got back to me today to say, or yesterday to say, yeah, you know what? If you guys can find us some fence and bring it out there, we'll put it up. Because currently, there's no fence. There's a couple of poles, but if you're walking along doing what all of us do when you walk along the beach, which is looking at the ocean, you would walk right by those poles and into the restricted area, which surprisingly is exactly what's happening. So I drew a nice diagram for them, and I convinced them that we could solve this problem if they would let us, and they said, well, we don't have any money, so we can't solve it, and we don't think we can put a fence up, but we'll get back to you on that. So the good news is, they have determined they can, in fact, put the fence up. So now, from anyone around who has the following things laying in their garage, orange or yellow plastic fencing, any length, we have wire ties, we'll put it together. yellow plastic fencing, any length, we have wire ties, we'll put it together; six-foot or eight-foot steel angle iron or T-bar fence posts, rusty is fine, any condition, as long as they're relatively straight, and if they're not, I know how to straighten them; vineyards, ten- or twelve-foot T-bar or angle iron fence posts, because when we get out into the tide line, we need to put the fence up in the air so the tide doesn't wash it out. You can deliver any of those that you have to my shop at three thirty-four North E. Just put them out there, and the first of the week, I will take them to the Air Force, and they will put them up immediately. This is extremely urgent, because as of today, they have twenty-five violations out of fifty. At the current rate, the beach will not be open by the end of this month, and I do not want to see all of our kids not get to go to the beach in Lompoc this summer. So everybody needs to dig up what you've got and bring them down. The other day, someone down there walked in and wrote on the sand, "Ha-ha, I violated." Okay? So let me explain why that's not too funny. Number one, it's going to close the beach. But number two, if you're walking down the beach and you're not paying attention, and you walk in and they give you a ticket, that's stupid, and it's a five-hundred-dollar fine. If you walk in there on purpose and you do something like that, it's a five-thousand-dollar fine. So if you know someone who's contemplating being silly, counsel them against it. Number one, we don't want to steal the beach from our kids, and number two, most of us don't have a spare five grand laying around to pay the fine. So again, yellow or orange plastic fence, T-bar or angle iron fence posts of virtually any length, bring them to Good Sounds at three thirty-four North E, and we will deliver them to the Air Force. Last thing, the Air Force is looking for more docents. They have fifty docents now that are helping patrol the beach. They're looking for more. If you would be interested in becoming a docent, and they particularly need people during the week, because that's when everybody's working, so if you're retired and you would like to help, call the Environmental Office on Vandenberg. They are very nice people, and they are trying desperately to keep our beach open, but they need our help. So get in the game, be part of the solution. Thank you for joining us this evening. The Lompoc City Council will adjourn to a special meeting at seven, nope, at six o'clock PM on Tuesday, April ninth. We look forward to seeing you then.